I will open the meeting. If you want to say, I don't see anybody through the public, but I will say that new security precautions were put in place is anybody who enters the meeting, your microphone is muted and your camera is off. I have made the three members who were present Leon, Celeste, and Wendy Marie, they've made them co-hosts so that they can unlock their own microphone.
I can't see my, the video is still off on me.
As you can do it. Try it again.
That's fine.
I'm trying again. You should be open your camera now. There you go. Okay, good. So anybody from the public would raise their hand, they could, they, they're down in the reactions at the bottom, they'd be able to raise their hand. And then I would be able to unmute them, but their camera is not going to be able to come on under this situation. And when I met with our tech department, the other option was two different meeting IDs, one for board members and one for the public. But I was concerned about, you know, we published it on the agenda and then board members called me at five minutes. Where's the email with the, with the access code because it's not the one that you published on the agenda? That would be correct because one would be the public. So we'll try it this way and hopefully it will resolve the issue with a Zoom bombing. Cat TV is in the meeting and Richard Bump is in the meeting for recording and taking notes. And so at this time, I'm going to go to agenda item one, reorganization of the board, appointments to committee. So at this time, I will ask, are there any nominations to be the chair of the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union Board of Directors? I'll nominate Scott McInerney for chair. Is there a second to that nomination? A second? Richard, that was Nicole who made the, please, the second if you didn't see. Are there any other nominations for the chair?
I'll nominate Cole Whalen.
Okay, no Cole Whalen, is there a second for Nicole Whalen?
I'll second.
Okay, so that was Ray that did that and we're gonna look at some papers so we can do a ballot here.
I, I don't know who's in the actually in the meeting there, is that Ray in there?
Yeah, so we have, we probably go down and introduce.
Ray Mullin.
Scott McInerney.
Jeff Lee.
Very sweet.
Who's in place on?
Crystal Lippo.
Mark Given. We have two nominations, Scott McInerney and.
I was gonna nominate Ray Mullin.
Okay. Ray says no, Ray says no, alright, so good point, are, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations.
This is appropriate, I appreciate, I seconded Scott's nomination.
So you're, you're good point, you want, you can accept or decline the nomination.
I'd be interested in working with Scott.
Same, same with me, so.
Okay.
Can they do it together like?
No.
Well, there's advice.
So if, we don't have but one person, then I can nominate Wendy Marie, if you don't mind it.
Is there a second for Wendy Marie?
I, I'm very busy right now, making lots of scones, so.
But it sounds like she declines the nomination.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, I'm not really sure how you want to proceed, is there one that wants to be chair and one who wants to be vice chair? Then I would ask whoever made the nomination if they're one that withdraw the nomination, so. Or one of us who are nominated could. Alright, well, we could do the vote and whoever is, you know, comes out as chair is chair and then you can nominate the other person to be the vice chair.
My guess, we could have discussions since there is.
You can have discussion and both candidates can speak to their desire to be chair.
Do you want to somehow figure out chair, vice chair with some working capabilities, I'm sure you guys can do that.
I had reached out to Dick to ask a bit about the responsibilities of the chair. I was the chair for the BBSU board for a number of years, the scope of this board is significantly larger. And I have some hesitation about having the capacity to do that right now. I do have interest in being involved on a, on a more significant level, I think there's an opportunity for for us all to kind of come together and stop being Bennington and Arlington. But I have worked a lot with Scott, I have great respect for Scott, I would be very happy to work with Scott if that was an option.
You said, you said exactly, very similar to what I would have said. You know, I've been on this SU board for five years now. I have been able to obviously watch the market away. Managed the board, ran the board, I recognize very well the, the need to bring the two communities, both Arlington, Sandgate, Bennington, together and make, make it feel more one. And I have known Nicole for many, many years and would be happy to serve either as her vice chair or as, as the chair as well, it's really, I, and, and Nicole has many more years of board leadership experience than I do also, it's full disclosure, but I'm learning.
Well, since me, Nicole's applying to be the chair, you're interested. Why don't we just vote affirmation for Scott being the chair? Upon to appointing Nicole as vice chair.
All in favor?
What?
For Sean.
Scott to be the chair of the SVSU.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Anybody abstaining? Okay, your first access chair is to call for vice chair.
All those in favor of Nicole Whalen for vice chair? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Alright, all those opposed? Any abstentions?
I think Leon.
Leon's got a comment.
I was gonna say, we still need to nominate Nicole.
Yes, I'll be the nominee for Nicole for vice chair.
I'll second it.
I guess you'll have to ask, is there any other nomination?
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Yeah, I said.
And then those favorite physician clerk.
Any nomination, accepting nominations for clerk of the SU board?
I'll nominate Susan Hassan.
I was the clerk and I, I made my largest role was working on correspondence for people who were retiring, so.
That's why I nominated Susan because she has ties out here.
Are there any other nominations?
I'll section Susan for, uh, Clark, do you have a second?
Yes. Any other nominations? Any other combinations? Any other nominations? You're supposed to ask three times, I, I learned that the last meeting. Under Robert's rules, you're supposed to ask. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Susan. Here is the wording for your next agenda, procedure for executing. Okay, so under, um, the, under number one, A, procedure for executing contracts, we need a motion to authorize the superintendent or his or her designate to execute on behalf of the school district purchase orders, agreements for consulting services, grant agreements, and other contracts arising affecting the routine operation of the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union. The superintendent or designate shall not execute any contracts resulting from a public bid process, any employment agreements, and any long-term contracts without the express authority from the board.
I'll make the motion for superintendent to execute contracts.
I'll second it.
Motion by Jeff Leon for the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And any abstentions? Okay, hearing none.
Number, yeah, it's a short point, you, you probably should have asked for discussion before we vote.
Before we vote. Thank you.
He's nervous, right? Yeah, he does, he's learning.
I'm learning, hopefully I'm a quick study. Under, with B, one B, authorizing, authorization of the chair, vice chair to approve off-site cycle warrants. Any discussion?
I'll make the motion for that to.
I'll second it.
Now, is there any discussion?
How often does this happen? It seems that with DocuSign, it does happen quite a bit. Especially with the wonky meeting schedule we've had lately.
Yeah.
Okay.
And in the summer often.
Yes.
Right.
So you don't, typically, we don't typically meet until a lot, so.
Our comment for that, the reason we wanted to make, we started that is because we don't want to hold up any employees or contractors' money on a, in a timely manner, being paid by the district. And so anytime we're not actively involved in terms of meeting or in between a meeting and things come up and they released a payroll warrant, we need to have them available to sign that so that we can be efficient in what we do as a, as a SVSU.
I, I assign ours for Arlington, so I do know the process, I just wasn't sure how often.
Oh, okay.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And any abstentions? Hey, committees. What's that, anything committees?
Well, we don't want to poll the comments.
Puzzle comments, right?
Okay.
Up, or number two on the agenda, public comments.
Anyone has public comments, you can go down to the bottom bar and hit reaction and your hand will raise, but I, I see only employees in the meeting, I don't see any members of the public, but employees could be public, but I don't see them.
Okay, moving on to finance and operations. The action would be to approve the treasurer's report.
I think most approve treasurer's report.
Second, Susan second, any, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Anybody, any opposed? And any abstentions? Okay. Jim, with action requested. What, how?
So the First Light Fiber Internet Contract, we have Representative Suzer IT here this evening, Mark Given, to speak to you about what that is and then ask for your action. So.
I made a motion to, uh,
do the First Light Fiber Internet Contract renewal.
Okay. Hey, any discussion?
I'm confused, isn't he discussing?
Yes, yes, but we have to formally get to that. Make the motion, second, then you have discussion.
Okay.
I'm doing it. I'm jumping the gun here.
It's an awkward way to do it.
I do it, it is the proper way to do it, but it is an awkward way to spell it, yeah.
So those who don't know, this is Mark Given, he works for Suzer IT, which is our management of our financial services and he is, works out this field. So we have the renewal for internet services for the SVSU coming up July 1st. So we submitted an RFP through the E-Rate process, which is our reimbursement funding. And we had three responses to that RFP, one with, one from First Light, a second from Consolidated Communications, and a third from Comcast Business. Our current service provider is First Light, we've been very happy with their service, they're very timely, reliable service for the, for the district. The proposals or quotes that came in had consolidated as the lowest price, First Light being the second lowest, difference being about $900 for a three-year contract, and the fourth coming in very high, which was Comcast Business. So we made the decision based on previous experience and reliability and cost to go or continue with First Light providing our internet service. The three-year quote for that service is 74,198 for the entire three-year term. We did submit the paperwork to E-Rate already because it was due yesterday by midnight, it was due 1:59 last night. However, that was contingent on the board approval for that three-year contract. So that was, that is why I made the day.
And why the agenda was amended yesterday.
Agenda was amended yesterday, correct.
That was gonna be my question because I didn't have that on my agenda.
Amy amended it yesterday morning in Senate yesterday. So in the information that I looked at earlier today, it said that the price for three years was lower than their price for the last three years, is that correct? That is correct, so. Let's see rates back to. The, so this is, yeah, a couple of things, thank you very much, a couple of things that kind of glossed over there. The previous contract was upgraded with this, just this past year because we needed some service upgrades done. Woodford got a larger connection, a higher bandwidth connection. They have some services that have been going in there in the last six months or so, interactive panels for teaching and things like that that required a little bit more bandwidth. So we upgraded their connection and we added a connection to Beach Street because the central office moved from Beach Street to here. They're continuing some services in Beach Street that required us to put a, a new connection in there. So our previous contract was at 81,000 and our new quoted for three years is at 74,198. So it is actually lo, more service, higher bandwidth in some sites, at a cheaper.
Or cost.
What is that?
A little competition of your best.
It was good negotiating.
Good negotiating.
Now, is that the net cost, 74,000 for three years? Yes. Okay. So there's, what's the E-Rate due? Three term after, okay, so the three-year term after E-Rate reimbursement for First Fiber would be 7,419. Our reimbursement's about 90% I think. Okay. That's what I read, so I wanted to confirm that because. Yeah. Seems like that's an awful lot of reimbursement. Great. It's, uh, it's very welcome, yeah.
Two, two questions I think for me, how do, how does Arlington, Sandgate, do they factor into this or is this just?
Not currently. So their, their connections are actually with a separate service provider. They should be folded in at some point, but the, the networks are, are separated still. So we do have a plan, we're currently going through the process of upgrading all of the hardware. Matter of fact, since January 1st, we've been going to each site here in the SVSU and replacing the network hardware with brand-new network hardware. In Arlington, we do have them in the plans for the future to tie them into this network. And are they currently receiving the advantage of the E-Rate reduction? I believe so, but I, I can't speak to that definitively, no. It may be a different rate, reimbursement. Yes, could very well be. Yeah.
And I think my other question would revolve around, it is nine, it is, I mean, $900, it's small numbers when you think about the overall size of the contract, but I would imagine, just for clarity, I would imagine there's a, there would be an expense, a hard, a hard cost expense to switching over to a different provider, should we, would we have chosen to go with a lesser?
There typically is, something would change, yeah, there, there would probably be a one-time involved, but.
So for, for $900, it's small money for, for being able to just hold things.
And, and the reliability and response time we've had with First Light, it would be risky to, I think, to go with anybody else, we, I don't think we get the same. Well, you've got better bandwidth in, in Woodford, you've got response, you've known service relationship and you're actually reducing your cost over the previous contract with them.
Yeah.
I don't see any issue with the $300 difference over.
Right, three years.
Three years, per year.
For three years.
Just a quick question for me, for bandwidth, are we doing okay in other buildings or is it bogged down sometimes still?
Uh, no, we, we are, we're actually, as the network hardware gets turned up, we're changing the configuration of the network. Right now, it's what we call a flat network and everything comes back to a couple main connections, actually one, but a lot of the services all have to come back to the high school. And we're breaking that up, so you'll, you'll see a much better performance across the, the wide area and local area networks.
So I know probably middle and high school because they're heavy computers, share, or supplementary school. You know, I know there's some, people said it bogged down a little bit.
Yes, yeah.
So, so that's, this should fix the problem, then increase in them.
Partially, the main correction is going to be when that new hardware comes up and we, and we configure that network differently.
Okay.
We're always chasing that because it's where more devices are added.
Yeah, it's a boards and classrooms that we never imagined, some capabilities that we didn't have, that is always.
Eating bandwidth.
Exactly.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you, so to get, now we, now we need a, a motion to move forward with the First Light contract, so.
Technically, we have a motion. So we just like to call the.
I'll call the question.
I'll answer, oh, I thought you said. All, all those in favor of, of awarding the contract to First Light Fiber, please signify by saying. Any, any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you, Mark.
Item, thank you, item four is policies, there are none, so we can move on to the consent agenda. I, I would expect that some on the board would want to break out the minutes from last meeting, from the remainder warrants, leave of absence, retirements, resignations, and nominations, just because some work here to, to approve that.
I'll make a motion that we approve them minutes first separately.
Okay.
I'll second.
So all those in favor of approving the minutes?
And we have discussion.
Oh, discussion. Any discussion?
One, the, the one issue I wanted to bring up is the, the minutes mentioned that there was, could be a meeting, board members were going, going to have a meeting with representatives from, from the legislature, but as far as I can tell, they didn't have it, hasn't happened. So that's still in the future, and we should get some.
Trying to get better information.
Trying to, you know, a Monday that everyone is available, that's the day they prefer.
It's right.
Every organization seems to be scheduling meetings for Mondays.
Yeah, well, that's, that's their usual.
Their session, correct.
Okay.
Good.
So with that, can we have a vote for moving forward with the minutes, all those in favor?
So, aye. Alright.
Aye.
Opposed? And any abstentions?
It was staying, but it wasn't here.
This has been removing this from the consent agenda now?
That was why, yeah.
Yes.
That's why we separated it, you know, now we, once we, so people who were in that meeting last time would approve.
You weren't yet to state.
Yeah, so now the remaining items from the consent agenda, warrants, leave of absence, retirements, resignations, and nominations.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Any discussion?
I think discussion on the nominations, that how many are actually certified to do what they've been hired for.
Certification as licensure?
License.
So it's going in from a licensure versus.
Yes, or not having any.
Either the licensed or they're hired on a waiver.
Yeah, how many, well, I want to know how many have the license, how many do not have the waiver.
So you want to break out waiver versus license individuals versus somebody who's pursuing.
Yes.
So I don't have anyone from your resources here this evening that could answer that question for me, but I certainly can get that answered too.
That would be, I would be very interested, because I know she sits off, but if we have licensed people applying, I would think.
If we have licensed people applying, we will hire them. Yes, but, but the practice. Look into the packet materials, you know, the, the nominations, they're all there.
I don't think I, I've received those. I just barely got my email.
Yeah, yeah, no, my.
I can, just to explain, when you get your agenda, it'll say click, it says right.
Click here, right?
It says click here for packet.
It'll take you to another file that'll say have a packet zipped.
Okay.
And a packet that you can just go in and see all the PDFs, the minutes, the financials, the nominations are all in there.
After the meeting, I can show you.
Yeah, I just got that email today, so.
So I can give you my hot copy tonight, once the meeting's over, and it's every nomination form from tonight, and it does say if there's a license or whether there's one not applicable, like, like, here's one for intensive need specialist, which is the power, so there's no license needed. Here's one for intervention teacher, it says the state of issue, endorsement, and expiration, so I will, I'll give you my paper copy when, when it's over.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? And any abstentions? Moving into item six, superintendent's report.
Good evening and welcome to the new board members, this is probably the most extensive reorganization of the SU board that I've seen in a, in a few years, so welcome. So as we reorganize tonight, you know, I think this is a proper time to speak to the challenges and some of the work that's ahead. Some, it's pretty obvious, as if you didn't pay attention. I need to find a new principal for Bennington Elementary School, need to find a principal for Molly Stark Elementary School, but those aren't the only openings that we have. The, it's called, the position at Woodford Elementary is called school supervisor. The principal at Shaftesbury Elementary, Jeff Johnson, is the principal of record of Woodford, and there's a supervisor in the building. Such a small building that when the previous principal slash teacher had retired, we went with this model. So the school supervisor is retiring, so we also have to find a replacement for that position, you know, also. We, we continue to build resources to assist our schools with the, the increase in dysregulated students as we see. with the the increase in dysregulated students as we see. Beach Street, you heard it mentioned tonight again, it is up and running, but it is not fully staffed, so we're not at full capacity. But even if it was, I'm not sure that that's enough for, you know, what we're seeing in some of our schools. We need as an S V S U to work through ensuring that all students have access to free and appropriate public education. But at the same time, assure the safety of our students and staff. That's the balance that we have with, when, when someone behaves, they have every right to be in that school. How do we keep them there safely for everyone? I continue to hear from our educators how difficult and how different our schools are from when they first entered the profession. I don't think anybody should be surprised by that comment. So how do we balance, you know, here's the challenge, how do we balance the legal rights of every student, but keep all safe from escalated behavior? As we enter the month of April and the final quarter of the school year, I see a a staff still dealing with the impact of COVID and the disruptions to education, and it weighs heavily on them and administrators. We continue to meet with the teachers association as part of negotiation settlement, and this is for the Union Elementary and M A U. Part of the negotiation settlement last time was the creation of a safety committee, which we've been meeting with regularly. And it is now going to be reconstituted as a result of actually grievance filed by the association. And we will continue to meet with the safety team made up representatives from each building. And, uh, because we need all patents to deal with the challenges. This is just something the administration can deal with, buildings can deal with. We need all of us working together to address this. Speaking of negotiations and challenges, uh, we've reached a tentative agreement with the uh, Union Elementary and M A U administrators, but it is not finalized yet. Uh, we're still waiting to open negotiations with the uh, Southwest Vermont Union Elementary School District and M A U School District support staff, and that will commence next Monday, April third, so I'm hoping that that I will come to a quick conclusion, but there are challenges, particularly among our our lowest paid employees and the challenges of filling those positions with the wages that we're currently offering. It was mentioned in our discussion about chair and vice chair. We we continue about let me back up. The challenge and the differences between the former Bentonville Valley Supervisory Union and the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union, there's differences in culture, in operations, in contracts, along with other things that are ongoing, and it's a learning process. It's going to take us years, but we can't let it stop. We have to. I spent an enjoyable morning at Arlington Memorial, uh, Middle High School today. I'm sort of, we, on one of our walkthroughs, um, and I think it was the community activity I saw today. But that, again, you know, it's not enough. I don't know what the, where we will ultimately rest, you know, can we, you heard, there's still differences in technology. There's differences in contracts, so I talked about negotiations with the, the, um, Union Elementary District and the M A U District, but also ongoing right now is the negotiations with the Arlington teachers and also their support staff, so, um, my understanding is the teachers is begun, is is ongoing, but the support staff has not, has not begun yet, right? Did you say two minutes?
No, I just was asking just if you guys have.
We've had one and, um, so we're going back and forth trying to skip.
So we are here to support you and HR is here to support you with anything that you need in your negotiations. That's one of the, like, differences in in culture. The administration is heavily involved in in negotiations, but here with the Union Elementary and M A U, but, um, as a resource, we know, we are not negotiators, so, um.
Now, do you have the, the agreements that Dan and I are going to work on the para?
Yes, we do.
And I don't have a copy of their contract.
So that, so you.
We haven't assigned that committee yet.
Well, I thought Dan said he told Todd he was going to do it and.
Yeah, I assume until you you formally meet.
We didn't do many assignments.
Right, I I don't have anything official, yeah.
Yep.
Once you have that, we would really like to get going with that. Legislature action that can impact two of our non-operating school districts. You know, it's currently in the forefront. I believe that the debate resumed today, as I said, I have no uh, updates, um, on where that debate is going, but we'll continue to monitor it, but as I said, it could it could have impact with North Bennington and Sandgate and, um, where they send their students to. We're still drafting and redrafting the school calendar. I would love to say that we have it done, but it isn't. I believe today we completed what I hope is the final draft. It's the number of early release days that continues to be the major obstacle to finalizing the calendar, uh, particularly in our partnership with Southwest Tech, and how they feel that the, uh, the half day, the early release days impact them, but they're, those are something that we as an S U value for staff development, staff learning, student, um, student release days for activities, uh, and with the lack of subs, the extra, uh, duties that our teachers and staff have been doing, the extra prep period that we give them on those Wednesdays, you know, is is essential. The other challenge is vacancies. Currently have about fifty vacancies in the S U, remember, we have over eight hundred employees throughout the S V S U. That's down from the number in January. Uh, but some of these positions have been vacant for a year or more, like S L P, social workers, psychologists, special education teachers, and special education parents. Those are the positions that remain difficult to fill, and as I said, some have been open for over a year. We have happier, but we have very few classroom teachers vacant, and, uh, as I look through our application software, which is, uh, school spring, those are the positions that I see many applicants for, actually, are classroom teaching positions. But some of those professional positions, as I look at the printout today, they still have a zero next to them as far as applicants. So it's mostly the professional and support staff that, uh, that we have these vacancies. And, um, so those, that's just a snapshot to some, my perspective on what the challenges we have uh, ahead this year, never mind the the day-to-day operations and, um, the impact on not having, uh, you know, a principal, uh, at Molly Stark and rotating administrators from here as much as possible. The vice principal is acting as principal, and I have administrators from here rotating. That's not sustainable, so we, we are working on a plan for interim vice principal for the proposal to the Union Elementary Board, uh, they're meeting on the eleventh. So it's, I I want to praise the Molly Stark staff. I spent, um, all day Monday there, it was my rotation to be at Molly Stark as the vice principal, and, uh, I just, I I see a staff, um, rallying around, uh, the interim principal right now. Uh, it was, it was heartening to see, and, um, that's how, that's how, that's how we're going to get this done, is, uh, build relationships with people and asking, you know, for their help and evolving everybody in the solution, so. And the only thing I have, if you, you have a task for this evening, uh, is to set your future meeting dates. Do you want to continue it to be the, uh, last Wednesday, the fourth Wednesday of the month? That's when you traditionally meet, and, um, we've been all over the place with meeting times. We probably should decide on what will be the standard, uh, meeting time at going forward, and then when you get to the chair, what you can make a recommendation. Uh, that's all I have this evening. What's your questions?
As as far as the support staff, I'm I'm wondering, I just, I just read an article in the banner about the police recruiting from Castle Town from Vermont State University, and they're physically going there on career day to move some of the graduates. Do we do that?
We'll be at, um, SUNY Plattsburgh tomorrow. So we have two people there, yeah, we we go to, as many, they're just coming back, because during COVID, they stopped in-person recruit. So Castle Town, uh, we Keene State has not brought theirs back yet, Fitchburg State's not brought, but we we go pretty far, the H R goes, and then we try to bring. So H R goes, they set up, we have table banners, we have the pull-up signs that has beautiful pictures of Vermont, to come to Vermont. Teaching Vermont, so it's, we we're invested in making it a a nice display. Uh, in fact, in SUNY Plattsburgh, to our mind, since we're the only Vermont school that will be there. But, you know, I was speaking with Nick Gault, and he said about the last one he went to, he went to U V M for, um, he went to a science, right? I think I told this story at another board meeting, he went to a science, um, job fair. And one education graduate came. But think of it, she wasn't at the education job fair, so she had, she was going to graduate with a degree in science. But she went to the STEM job fair, not the education, where, so we're even going to job fairs like outside of the traditional field of education to try and recruit people, so, you know, H R is doing a very aggressive job, but, um, it's a challenge.
Something going on. My other question is just with the, uh, I've never gone through this, the procedure of hiring a principal yet. Are, do we have teachers involved in the hiring committees?
Yeah, we we do a a screening committee, it's not a hiring committee, it's a screening committee. Uh, for the permanent physician, yes, we will. We will, we will, this, we usually try and get a community member, a staff member, administrator, yeah. Then they make the recommendation superintendent, superintendent makes recommendations to the board.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Oh, go ahead.
Yep, go ahead, Leon.
You're on mute. Can you hear Leon? You're on mute. Leon, you're on mute.
Keep tapping, Leon.
Okay.
Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, it's at, uh, the end of, uh, last year, and during finance times, we were all talking about uh, referrals, uh, disciplinary actions in the school, and wanted to put money in different places to, uh, control those things. What, what I'm asked, going to ask, and I'm, this is just a concern, at one, when we had a problem with absenteeism, what we did was we had all the schools start, I mean, was reporting them, and we put them on that monthly sheet that you have on here now, that's under the F Y I, looking at how many students are present in the, in the school, uh, by month, on a monthly basis, for each school district. Why can't we get the number of referrals of the problem type issues, so that we can see in all of our different districts, what are we having issues? Uh, I mean, in terms of a percentage, number of issues or something along that lines, so that we can actually, um, have people see that we're working to get these things down as opposed to just talking about them being out here, but we don't know where the numbers are in each one of the districts, our schools, and we don't know, uh, what, what proactive things that we're taking to try to get them down when we, uh, after we talk about them, besides, uh, adding money in positions.
So we are generating a report for each individual board of what, because we can see student data that, uh, we plan on sharing with the boards on the Union Elementary Board and with the M A U Board, uh, not with the general overriding board that way. Uh, monthly report has a couple of issues that I could think of. I'm just really responding off the top of my head, Leon, you know, absence is, um, it doesn't identify anybody, and it's, you're either here or you're not, it's a simple question. When we talk about, instance, when we look at what with our Swiss data, which will tell us what type of, is is different categories of, of, and so that would be a a difficult report, but we, I have asked our, um, director of assessment, uh, curriculum to generate a report by school. The idea came from, um, it's, you know, we, we participated in an event at Bennington College last Monday, and they used the term heat map, and this was in regards to where crime reports are in Bennington. And they map it out on a map, and they can see where the resources need to go. So I took that back here and said, can I get, for lack of a better term, a heat map of where our incidents are, so that we can do exactly what Leon is saying, ensure that with the Union Elementary Board and then with the M A U Board and see, you know, where, you know, where, I think we, we all have our guesses of, you know, where, uh, we're seeing a higher number dysregulated students, uh, in what schools we're in, but trust me, it's occurring in all schools, but where's the frequency is what, you know, what I'm looking at, because you're right, um, I said this at another meeting, I'll say this. Do I have enough resources in all schools, like to treat every school equally, that every, say, elementary school as a principal and a vice principal? May not be the model that I need, right? Because uh, say Molly Stark, our biggest elementary school, has the same administrative structure as, um, Shastberry Pond is going to have next month, next year, and what Bennington Elementary with, you know, a hundred and twenty less students. So, uh, I want to use data to, um, inform administration, staff, and the boards with where our resources should be deployed.
And Leon, that's one thing I did mention at the education meeting towards, you know, when we did the budget this year, because we had a bunch of positions open for, you know, you know, intensive need specialists or para educators, and just wondering why there need in certain areas, and, you know, Jim kind of said the same thing, you know, for, to address these problems, so I think Sandy Foxer asked the same questions, like, can we just get the data so we can present it to the community and say, you know, we need these people because X, Y, and Z, because of the numbers.
So that, that is, those reports are are going to be generated, you know, how many.
I I can't tell who's, who is.
Sensitive that, I'm not calling out, and I, I'm not doing this to shame a school, I'm not doing this to, uh, say that, yeah, I'm trying to be, I'm sensitive, because at the same time, I want to recruit people to go to these schools, I want teachers to come and work at these schools, and, but I, you know, and, so I don't want to say like, oh, by the way, look how many, look how many incidents we have at the school, so, but we can't, uh, so I'm, I'm looking at the point of where we reallocate or reassign or shift, uh, resources to based on need.
Can they be like a rotating basis of like intensive need specialists from the schools?
From which positions I said are also the most, that are not filled.
I know.
Yeah, so yes, I just, this.
Just thinking, you know, like rotating parents.
This, this, yeah, this is definitely the time to to think.
Everything's changed now.
Everything's shifting, yeah.
Everything's changed, so. What do I hear when I go to the school, like, this is not what I signed up for, it's not like how it is when I started, so uh, we can't think how we've always thought about solving a problem.
Um, I have a couple of questions. How many vacancies still exist on the different boards? I saw an app pop up somewhere. M A U is missing one representative from Bennington, one from Tom, and one from Woodford. And then at S V S U.
Just one.
One, and that's.
Bennington.
Yeah.
So, um, those will be filled by, um, middle of April, because in software, I'm turning up the last meeting, there is a timeline on this. So, uh, the M A U will not be holding a meeting during school vacation week anyways, so we polled the M A U members yesterday, and Amy do that. Looks like Monday, April tenth, will be the M A U meeting, which will keep it under the timeline. You have thirty days from when we notify this, uh, notify the select board of the town. when there is an opening to fill it, so. Thank you. Yep, so um, that is April twelfth is the deadline. The Union Elementary Meeting is already scheduled for the eleventh. We'll shift the the meeting for MAU that wasn't gonna happen during vacation week to the tenth. And uh, I think there are, I think there are candidates, people who have emailed us for every seat now. So it's possible that all fortunately, so. You know, there may still be a yeah, there may still be, we still may need somebody from, yeah, panel, we still need somebody from panel for MAU. If anyone's listening.
I think I think I might have some.
We did, yeah, we did have one the day, the client said it was, they were too busy. Any, anything else for Jim?
When you, when you talk about connecting with legislators, I know I had mentioned before, can we just make sure that Kathleen James and Seth Bonkers are included?
Yeah, she she is, yeah, uh, yeah.
Okay.
What was the other, I mean, I know Kathleen James is, but.
Seth Bonkers.
Okay. I'll make sure that that name's not ringing, but. It may, it may be on the distribution list that.
I would, I had um, with all of the whatever H four eighty-three that's going forward with the tuition unis, I had met with them because it does impact us being in proximity to a school choice community that we have been trying to recruit from for a while.
You're right. It doesn't just affect North Bennington and and Sandgate, you know, or it could impact you too.
It's unfortunate the way the legislation has evolved, though it doesn't really look like it's something that will pass.
I don't I don't wanna speculate with the listener, but it does seem, yeah, there's significant opposition to it, it appears.
Well, they've excluded all of the historic academies from being de facto public school representatives for their communities. And that's way too much of a political body.
Big league, yeah.
Yeah. It's unfortunate. I mean.
I, you know, I mean, it's relatively quiet on it because within our own district, I have competing views on it, so, you know, what should happen, so.
I participated in a Zoom session that they did, that the BSB A hosted, sponsored and and hearing from different legislators who are involved in the the process, the legislation drafting process. And some very strong opinions that any money that we're sending to private schools, regardless of what's, you know, whether it's a historic academy or the private independent Grace Christian School, you know, any of that money is taking dollars away from our public schools. Doesn't really, you can't slice it any other way. And so with the struggles that the public schools are having, it is a, there are some real champions for
That's a controversial argument.
It is, for sure.
And when I said that, I have competing views with the Miami district, and that's why I'm behind Simon, just um, so.
It's a tricky one to try to.
Yeah. Neil Dell's argument in this, the video presentation. I don't find that very explicit.
Who's that?
Neil, it always, the VSB A chair.
I could see.
To back his point, I know the, I know the Kathleen James was at our first, the administrative legislative, so I know she, I'll check on the other.
Okay.
All right, um, moving on to item seven, Chair's Report. You know, given the fact that I've been in this for a very short time, I haven't had the opportunity to prepare a report. Uh, I would, for just though, like to say thank you for the opportunity to serve in this role. Uh, I'm looking forward to learning, looking forward to reading up on my Robert's rules. And um, looking forward to serving with.
I have a copy, and I have, we have a copy of the Vermont State blog for all the chairs on.
I do travel a little bit with my role and knowing that when the meetings need to be operated by um, by the next person in line, it's nice knowing that it'll be somebody who has the experience Nicole does, and I'm looking forward to learning from her. One of the things that I did wanna do, because there are so many new faces and I only know, know a few of them, um, would be just to quickly go around the room and um introduce one another. We're all on the same board together, we're in the same district and we're, we're hopefully rowing in the same direction, so um, I'll start. Um, I'm Scott McInnany. Um, I am a member, I am a resident of Shaffsbury. I'm a member of the Union Elementary School Board, which is why I'm on this board. Um, I'm also a member of the Mount Anthony Board. But I am serving on this board in the capacity of the um elementary school position. I have a daughter who's at Shaffsbury Elementary, a sixth grader, going into the middle school next year, and a son who's currently at the middle school, going into the high school next year.
Ray?
Ray.
I'm Ray Mullin, I'm the Chair of the North Bennington Grade School District. I've been this time in my twenty-fourth year on boards. Much of my, you know, I've spent a lot of that time on the SBSU Board as a representative from my board. And uh, I'm the only representative from my board now. And um, what, my children are long past teenagers in schools, but they went through North Bennington Middle School, MAU. My son graduated from UVM. I don't know what else to say. I've uh been the Chair of North Bennington Board for at least eighteen years. Out of that twenty-three minutes, if I don't keep track of this. Long time. And I've participated, because I'm my only district rep on this board, I've participated on the um Finance Committee and uh the uh Superintendent's Evaluation Committee. And I assume I will be participating again because I'm the old person from my district.
Uh, Nicole?
Uh, Nicole Baylin. I live in Arlington. I've been on the Arlington Board for, I don't know how long. I've served as the Chair. I was the Chair of the BBSU Board. Um, was in that capacity during the Act forty-six process and all the angst that was surrounding that experience. I'm just, as I said from the beginning, I'm really committed in this iteration of this board and whatever we do going forward to meld our, our communities into one board so that we're really talking about all of our students. I think the more we can work together, you know, we'll all, we'll all be better for it. And I, I guess I'm I'm done with the conversations of this being a forced marriage that none of us wanted, um, because some arranged marriages work out really well if you approach it with the right attitude, so. Um, I was involved last year with the Superintendent Evaluation Committee and the Policy Committee. I that's right. I have three kids who've gone through school in Arlington.
If I might make a comment in response to your notion of unity, you know, we have two districts that are non-operating districts and they're quite different from operating districts. They're very difficult to, uh, there are differences are going to continue to be there. No matter how much of you is in terms of Arlington's uh integration into the SBSU. Because uh we're part of the SBSU, but uh we have different needs and we don't need eleven services than the other districts.
Yeah. But there's certainly some places, Ray, where you and I have had conversations where there's some real common ground on sort of financial transparency and some things that affect our.
No, no doubt about that.
Yeah.
I'm not disagreeing.
Yeah.
Uh, on the screen, Leon.
You got me first, huh?
Yeah.
Leon Johnson, I uh was on the board in nineteen ninety-three. I think it is. I've served on every board, I've been on the board every year since then. Uh, there was no separation between the South Rest of Mont Career Development Center and Mount Anthony, and I was on both. And when they split up, I was on both and we were uh still attending. At some point in time, I got on SBSU and I'm not been off of that. So a lot of the things that the district is doing in terms of procedures and documentation and so forth, I've had my hands in working that up with some of the other board members that are no longer here, and I think I may be one of the last ones uh that have been involved with all of those things on the board. So uh, my kids all went through the system of of Mount Anthony and uh graduated and and done real good in in life based on uh the education they got from Mount Anthony and the Career Development Center. So I have grandkids now going through the system and they're doing the same thing. So I look forward to continuing to do things out here. I do like to follow the recommendations and all the procedural trainings that the uh Vermont School Board does, and they send those, that information out monthly, so. Or I was, I've always attended their seminars and they do have training for board chairs and 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 vice chairs and supervisors that they uh say that we should be uh all attending so that we can all be on the same page of having nice formal meetings and uh meetings that will be productive and with, and based on everybody's opinion. So I I still strongly recommend that everybody stay as close as possible to the formal information that the Vermont School Board has to offer us for training so that we can be efficient in what we do. Thanks.
Thank you. Wendy?
Hi, um, my name is Wendy Jean Marie. I um, and I've lived in the area for about five years now. Uh, moved here, I moved to Vermont from Seoul, Korea. I was teaching overseas at an international school in fifth grade. Um, I've been a teacher for over thirty years. I was also an administrator, a principal for a middle school. I've been a gifted coordinator for districts, um, been a staff development person for set social justice as well as an adjunct professor at George Mason University. Um, a lot in the field of education. I'm here because I care about students. They're my main focus. Um, students and the teachers getting the support they need to be able to give the students what they need. Um, I have two kids of my own. Um, they're both in Chicago, which is my hometown. And uh, one graduated from Vassar and the other from the Art Institute of Chicago. Um, they went to school down in DC where I was a teacher for a really long time. Um, I don't know. I don't know what else I can say.
Are you currently an employee?
No, I'm so sorry. I thought you understood that I was a board member. I'm on the MAU board. No, no, I I'm on that.
Have you taught in this district?
No, I have not taught in this district. I moved to Vermont, like I said, from Seoul, Korea, after I've been teaching there. Um, and I wanted to open a bakery, so. I moved later, I have a bakery, so um.
You must have missed the last meeting when she brought samples.
Oh.
Sorry, I, I got slammed in the orders today, so I, that's why I'm not there, so um, but I normally would be happy to bring samples into the meetings. Um, but um, yeah, no, I, I love teaching and I I, it was my, a huge passion, um, a large part of my life. And I um, I loved it because it was an opportunity for me to be as creative as I wanted to be in the classroom. The kids love that and they love to come into school, and I want our students to want to come to school. Um, Leon was talking about attendance and I I heard many things from the community about attendance and I I really wanna sort of move towards having our students feel as though school is a safe place, that school is a place where they get support. Um, and I'm sorry, I applaud the efforts that Mr. Col King is uh working on to try to help those kids out.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Stazan. I am a a board member on the MAU Board. I am the Vice Chair of that, been on that board for three years. Um, I work at the Bennington Banner. I'm the Advertising Sales Manager. There, I am also the Chair of the Better Business, Better Bennington Corporation. For those of you who don't know, that's the downtown organization that keeps the events coming downtown. Um, I have two children who both went through, started in Molly Stark and went all the way through um, the high school and the CDC. Uh, my daughter just graduated in May uh from Russell Sage College and she's a nurse at SBMC. And my son went through the um, MAU as well and the CDC. And he found his calling in athletic training and he works for St. Peter's Health Park, there's some try.
Where do I start? Curiously, um, lived in Arlington my whole life, watched my father negotiate twenty-some, more than twenty years on the board. As Chairman, watched him when they were part of SBSU, watched him when he pulled out, when they pulled away from SBSU and became the home district. My parents went through Arlington, my siblings and I went through Arlington, my children went through Arlington, my grandchildren are now in Arlington. I taught school for forty years. I know what happens inside school. It's changed tremendously. The stress level is so much higher than when I started, I don't know, nineteen seventy-eight, if you will. I wanna bring that perspective. The learners are the most important part to me. And I feel that we need to do whatever we can to help them get through this. There are, just COVID itself traumatized every child. You're dealing with trauma behaviors. And how you go about healing that is what we have to figure out. Um, I worked at the Village School, I worked in public school most of my career. I've worked in many schools in the state of Vermont, um, some good, some bad. But, you know, I love all of it because I love kids. And um, I'm enjoying village school because of the community. And I think that's what needs to be brought back to our schools, community. And we lost that somewhere along the way. That's why I'm here and I served on the board a while ago, left because I needed to work, so I started subbing. And decided it was time to try to come back and try and get it. So here to do what I can do.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jas Bakiake. Um, I am starting my second year um of the, on the Arlington School Board. Um, I live in Arlington. I have three kids, uh, two in elementary school and one in middle in Arlington, uh, Registered Nurse Case Manager, I work for the Vermont Blueprint for Health. And I'm just um excited to be on this board and to, you know, try to, try to bring the two, the two districts together and she's our Vice Chair. I, yes. I also have an ice cream truck, so we can do scones and rotate.
Um, I'm Jack Leek. I'm on the, I'm from Shaffsbury. I'm the Elementary Board with Scott. Um, I've been on the board, you know, five this year, so it took a year off and I came back on after somebody else stepped down. Um, you know, I have a seventh grader in the middle school who is, you know, probably more politically active than I am right now. She's on the Vermont State Youth Council for the state, representing the kids in the state. Um, so she is on a lot of the bills that are coming through, especially the school choice, and they're trying to figure out whether to support or not support those type of things too. So there's a good group of kids and, you know, that's what I'm hoping, you know, see more of is kids stepping up and being part of their community to make change for the youth of Vermont. So I think that's kinda, I've kinda shifted my role towards that, I feel, what do kids need?
Wow, the conversations around your dinner table must be fun. The jam board. You know, we see jam board again.
Um, I, thank you. You know, just, we, I I kinda need a scorecard, so it would be nice if we have a list of people and maybe if everybody can contribute a few sentences of this, what they gave verbally today to, I I don't know.
Let's, let's see what he's, let's see what comes out in the minutes, we're just, yeah, so. Yes, yeah, we could have, I could have, maybe we'll pull something together.
Thank you.
I have one question.
I have one question I'd directed, I don't, I think you mentioned the meeting times?
Yeah, I was.
Okay. Then go ahead, I will.
No, no, so meeting times historically have been, uh, third Wednesday, fourth Wednesday, fourth Wednesday. At, and I, I got myself confused on this one, I thought they were normally five thirty, and this one crept up at five.
Me too, I was so confused.
You didn't have a chair, so you might, you know, it might have been my mistake, I had the full meeting ticket, right, so, right, no worries.
I had it on my calendar for five thirty, and then I, I practiced this, and I went, oh god, and I ran here because I had to walk in today, so. I was waiting at five thirty.
What, what's the day, the time on our minutes from rest?
It's usually five thirty, it starts, because, because for me, I know, I'm, well.
Five o'clock.
Yeah, I work until five thirty, if I want to be present, if I, if I want to join electronically, I can.
I mean, I think five thirty is fine, I'd rather do five thirty than six to get home and then go back out, I don't mind that so much in the summer.
If you go back pre-COVID, you just, I mean, at seven o'clock, and that, I really hope you don't go back to that.
Yeah.
Wasn't enough time to have dinner before, and then it was too late.
Go with five thirty on the fourth Wednesday of the month?
If, as long as there's no, uh, no opposition. Uh, and with that, I'll.
I have a question, though, Scott, um, committee assignments, when and how does that usually take place?
I'll give him a list of what committees, and then he'll, he'll appoint.
Okay.
What, because S U always has a little bit of a, you know, process, like, if each board appoints people to. To, like, an S U committee, like, say. Negotiations, then does the S U really?
No.
They don't, so, um.
Because the representatives to those standing committees come from the. The individual committees themselves, so there's not as many appointments from the S U committee. Yeah. But I'll, I'll do a little historical research, it, it's, it's confused every S U Chair down the line, so.
If some, we double dip.
Right, because it could, because it could, some would see it as double dip, so I will, I will, uh, do a little historical research on it, and I'll get it to the Chair, and just stay away from that, yeah.
Hi, um, I had a quick question, as far, as far as the committees are concerned, um, if Scott's the one that's sort of appointing folks, how will he know if people are interested, or what if someone isn't?
I will get him whether, what, are there any standing committees for the S U as opposed to from your own, and you, because.
Right, I know that.
If you heard Jeff's comments, some feel it's a double dip, if, right?
Right, I got that, but I mean, like, is he going to communicate with us?
The Superintendent's Evaluation is an obvious one that only exists with the S U and finance. And finance, and those are probably the only two S U committees.
Uh, we don't have a rep on policy, because that's.
Each, each individual board saying something to the members from the individual boards. And it'll be, it'll be a collaborative effort, it won't be something.
I'm interested, so I put it out there.
You, you kind of, I mean, one thing that's not progressed is that you have to point from the individual districts.
Right, okay.
But somehow, right.
The individual may.
Research, our turn to make sure that we're not in my district.
What we, what we have, and we're supposed to ask, we don't, versus what we have, but don't. Okay, that would be good, we do it right, okay. I don't believe so, but my computer turned on.
As it relates to committees, this isn't an S U committee, and it's not a board level, district level board committee. The diversity advisory. Group that Jonathan has.
Yeah.
Is there any?
There's no board appointees to that, the board members go, but, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I would like.
They're open meetings.
Okay, I would like to participate, and just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any reason why that was inappropriate.
And Jim, can you just send me, because there are some new members to the board, even all the boards, could you send out a list of, maybe, or somebody a list of what all these policy and, you know, vice.
When they typically meet, yeah, okay, you know, just, just, I think a lot of people, if they want to come to the public. Yeah, it's very hard.
Nicole, Nicole, are those diversity meetings, are they warned?
No, they're not.
I have not seen those before.
Yeah.
How would one get on the mailing list to be aware of them?
I can see that you get that.
Awesome, awesome, thank you. But in a situation like that, if you have multiple board members attending a committee meeting like that.
This is a committee that I started, it goes back before Jonathan, and it goes, um, so there were. It really was a matter of what's interest, so I don't want to misspeak here tonight and say how it's been proportioned, because it's, it's morphed into something else, and what there may be. It may be, um, because I, since we've hired Jonathan, I've backed down from the committee.
Yeah.
So I don't know, there may be allocated seats by, you know, his, so many teachers, his, so many. I, I go to the meetings as much I can, the problem is, you know, he's been scheduled in the same night as policy meetings, so. So I, I, I will, I will get that information, because there's, you know, obviously a lot of interest. But we do not want them, they're not, you know, they're not, uh, public meetings per se, because there's no form of any board.
So, uh. I wanted to say something, I thought I heard Jim said at S B S U or somebody said that it's two committees, one is finance. And one is policy, is, did I hear that right?
I didn't say policy.
Oh, you didn't, well, I'm.
Personnel.
Oh, personnel.
There is a personnel committee, which is irregularly, it's not a.
Okay.
Around specific issues.
Uh, we made, uh, the Policy Committee, S B S U. Because we had trouble back when we created, when I got on the district board back in the. Had the, the nineties or something, every, every individual district was operating on their own, and we were getting sued. Left and right, because we weren't consistent from K through twelve. And so. S B S U with Dick France and, uh, several others, we all got together and formed the Policy Committee. At the S B S U level and got policies agreed to and had an assignment, we have a documented, of sign. That agreement that all the districts, that the S B S U will, will manage the policies. For all the districts, and they go to all of the districts so that they can have input, and all of the districts provide individuals. To be on the Policy Committee. Is what we have in place, because that's the only thing that the school boards and, basically, the primary thing is responsible for being. Uh, have, I mean, forming policies that manage the school. Uh, districts and individuals and, and, and whatever things come around with education, so all of the policies come through S B S U in this district.
Thank you. And feel free, any of the new members that you have questions, feel free to email me. Or any, any other business, item eight, any, there's other business, any? Um, nine, just as FYI. In the packet is the S B S U Bunches Status Report and Student Enrollment, um, Report for March of two thousand twenty-three. And now.
We're just in the meeting.
Any discussion? Look, I remembered.
Oh, you got it.
Yeah. All those in favor? Opposed? And, uh, and extensions, getting closed at six twenty PM.